I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I know we at least have two people signed in wishing to speak, Mr. Butino and Mr. Adams. No? Nobody else? All right, well, then we will move on to reports of board and committee. I will say written communication, I did send out to the board, the communication I received from BOSI's, with the two incumbents that are running, the letters that they sent, asking for our approval, so we need to... When is that done?
The next board meeting.
The next board meeting, we need to decide, you know, who we're voting for. There's only two running for two spots, as far as we know at the moment. Boards and committee report, policy committee, Mrs. Arrington?
Yes, we had a policy committee meeting last Monday morning. No new policies, everything was just a revision of the policy, really just enhancing the verbiage that are in the policies. As usual, we are pretty much doing what we already are supposed to be doing, just making clarifications to, like, towards the concussion management, just more step-by-step procedural issues, same with sex harassment in the workplace, just putting more details, just make everything very clear with policies and procedures.
Can I ask a question about the policies that were reviewed, or should I wait until we discuss? Regarding the textbooks, library materials policy, was there any discussion about calculators being required as an item? The policy states that students are not required to purchase their own calculators, that will be provided by the district.
That wasn't necessarily a change, so I'm assuming that was existing in the policy, the gist of those two policies will be focused on, or just making sure that the media materials in our library were for educational purposes? And that's really what the verbiage and the gist was, so we didn't discuss that?
Are you talking about eighty-one-ten or eighty-thirty-twenty, eighty-three-twenty?
Eighty-three-twenty.
Yeah.
Yes, eighty-three-twenty has that in there.
Yeah, the focus on that one was more along the lines of materials, that piece wasn't changed.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a suggestion that if we approve this policy as written tonight, that we should make supply lists more clear in the middle school and the high school to note that calculators are provided if needed, rather than stating that they're required on supply lists. It's an expensive item that, you know, certain members of the community may not be able to afford readily and may feel stressed from having to see that word required on there. Or table the policy and revise the language in the policy if we don't want to change the supply list.
I think we'll probably have to change the supply list, because if my recollection is correct, the language is in compliance with the law. So changing that would make our policy out of compliance with the law, which we don't want to do. So I think your suggestion is probably more of an easier move to either buy them and supply them, like we do textbooks, or indicate on the supply list that they could be provided as one or the other. We'll accomplish, I think, what you're looking to honor the spirit of the policy.
Absolutely.
Could we possibly find out what that expense would be? That could be a major...
They're about a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
They're up to one-twenty-five now.
They're up to one-twenty-five now.
Yeah, one-nineteen most likely. Would you any idea?
Are we supposed to just do math, or should we figure out what we need? Or what, maybe before we start spending them?
We're not going to buy calculators for everyone, it's just for the people who need them. And they do have quite a number of them in the classroom now. They just would need to supplement for the, or they need to change the wording, because what Lori's running into is people coming into the food pantry asking if they have calculators. So if we just communicate more clearly to the people who might need the calculators, that they are available, we already have most of what they would need.
So we don't care how much we're going to have to spend?
I mean...
I don't know if we have to spend anything, you know, we'd have to know what the supplies of the calculators are in the classroom. So, you know, it may not, it may not be any additional expense. But I don't think we have that information tonight.
And it's how the policy is written right now, that we would have to provide everything with a calculator, so...
If we went with the actual language of the policy, yes.
So if we just clarify on the supply list policy?
Is it providing everybody in the classroom?
That's how the policy is reading it.
So it's not, it's just for the classroom, not every student?
To the extent that calculators are a necessary part of the instructional program, the district will provide them.
Yeah, in our current practice, if somebody doesn't have one, and they communicate to us that they aren't able to get one, we loan them one, you know, but...
That's putting the onus on a student to, you know...
Yeah, or a family.
Say that, yeah.
So I think we could revise our practice to be more in line with our policy, which is in line with law. We can't, I don't think we can adopt a policy that's not directly aligned to education law, so if it ends up...
But the education law specifies that we have to provide calculators?
Yeah, they specifically reference it as, like, an instructional material similar to a textbook. That's how it's now being viewed, so I guess at this point, the policy is probably written the way it needs to be, we just need to review the practice.
Could you do a quick inventory, what's out there now?
I think in most cases, there's a class set in the teachers' classrooms that have them, but we would need, you know, possibly to purchase some more. But I don't think it would be something that would be impossible for us to accomplish within our supply budget.
Okay, any other reports?
Yeah, I attended the January twenty-first ECASD advocacy training and the legislative breakfast, which was, they were both very well-attended, a really nice event. The advocacy training was the first piece of it, where Frontier Schools were featured. They talked about their advocacy committee that they have, which is made up of some of their student government leaders, PTA members, board members, administrators. And they meet monthly, virtually, and have their legislators or the person's aide or staff member attend those meetings. And, you know, meet as a group and build those relationships, really nice model to learn about. And then the legislative breakfast was pretty well-attended. Karen McMahon was there. And they seamlessly had the opportunity to present to the elected officials what a bunch of the issues were that the districts were facing, including electric buses, money for CVA settlements, and fees. Talked about education funding and mental health funding. I think you all may have received a PowerPoint presentation from Jane. One of the important pieces that was mentioned there was that Assemblyman Conrad was the one who brought it up, that said, you know, "We get so many memos and emails, and, you know, it's so much more powerful if you call me or meet with me to discuss issues," that, you know, it's really, you know, more important or more beneficial to them to hear it directly. And, you know, it's so overwhelming to have all the paper and the emails, they get lost. So I thought that was a good tidbit to have.
Great. Anyone else? All right, then we will move into the superintendent's report.
Great, well...
About the great master teachers.
Yeah, I'm pleased to provide you with an update on some of our newly indoctrinated master teachers here. And thank you all for being here. We have, so to start out here with a formal presentation, I'm pleased to share with you that our district has expanded the presence of our master teacher program. We have five newly minted master teachers that I'm proud to present to you tonight. So I'd like to introduce them to you first. We have Mr. Kenzie from our high school math department. We have Christina Randazzo from Windermere Boulevard. Deanna Castle Hepler from Smallwood Drive Elementary. Stephen Johnson from Amherst Middle School. And Mike Milliman from Smallwood Drive Elementary. So it's a very exciting program. Our teachers are able to collaborate with teachers in the region and across the state on work in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So just to give you a little background on the master teacher program, it was started ten years ago by then-Governor Cuomo, and it requires a four-year commitment, which include conferences, workshops, meetings that are scheduled outside of the school time. A lot of times they're on weekends or during our breaks for summer. There's nine-hundred-and-twenty-one in the program now. And those who commit, excuse me, who complete their four-year commitment become known as master teacher emeritus. And they are able to still contribute to the program and benefit from being part of the program. The program is linked to the SUNY system. Here in Western New York, it's run out of Buffalo State College. And it has three domain strands that ensures the professional learning is focused on enriching content in STEM subjects. Once again, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And incorporating successful practices in the classroom and using their understanding to guide students in their learning. It's a very rigorous application process. I could go into the rigors of the application process, but I might offer our master teachers the opportunity to talk about the process that they had to go through in order to become a master teacher, if anyone's willing. Yeah, like, "Yeah, I just got murdered, to be honored, I wasn't going to speak."
Well, I guess I can talk about something that I had to do that was very, very difficult. I had to take something called a Praxis exam, which is a mathematics assessment. I teach first and second grade, so I, you know, my repertoire is not really large with mathematics. I had to be tutored by my daughter, who was a junior at the time, taking, and she takes calculus. So she did tell me, though, it was supposed to be a middle school math exam, but she said, "Mom, this is not middle school math, it's high school math," so...
Great.
After the application, you face the next round. There was a Saturday from about eight-thirty in the morning until four or five at night. You've got to be by your computer for three Zoom interviews, individual, a group of three or four, other prospective master teachers, like a roundtable discussion, and a ten-minute presentation on a STEM topic of, or that you were passionate in to present on, and then answer questions if they did ask you on the presentation.
The real difficulty was locating the tablets on which my college credentials are listed. So that was the real difficulty, was excavating those. But after that, it was pretty easy.
Well, it says here that you also needed to submit three letters of recommendation. And you also needed to respond to various writing prompts as well, focused on three domains. So I don't know if those are things you blocked out of the process and forgot, but other than that, I think we've covered it. It's a pretty extensive process. I'm proud to say here in Amherst, for this round of awarding master teachers in the Western New York region, our district had the second-largest number of master teachers inducted into the club, so to speak. So as you can see, Buffalo had seven, we had five, Williamsville and Frontier had four, Newport and several other schools had two. And again, given, you know, the size of our district of about three thousand students compared to Buffalo at thirty thousand students, you know, that was quite an accomplishment for our district, and we're very proud of all of you. We also have, they also joined several other teachers from Amherst in the master teacher program, which you've had the pleasure of honoring here before. So I won't read all of their names, but you can see across all of our four buildings, we have several people that have already been part of the program. I think one of our very first was Stephanie Redine, and she is now, yeah, a couple of them are in the master teacher emeritus, because they've completed their four-year commitment, and they're now in that emeritus part of their master teacher program, which is great. And they've inspired some of the next generation of our teachers to participate. So the five new master teachers say they were inspired by those that came before them. All of them had conversations with existing master teachers who described how they have grown and benefited from being part of the program. I'm sure the Kenzie brothers probably talk about it at Sunday dinners, or when they get together, when they're not talking about basketball or something else. It's a credit to our district that our faculty supports one another and that they encourage one another to pursue these initiatives. So what's new, the master teacher program, last fall, Governor Hochul expanded the program to include K-12 counselors. There's also been a lot of discussion about including non-STEM-related subject areas, like ELA and social studies. That hasn't happened yet, but this is a step in the right direction, that now they're expanding it to include counselors, K-12. So future presentations might include members of our pupil personnel staff, because we know they are fantastic. So any questions for me or for the masters themselves? Congratulations, thank you very much, great job. And I look forward to seeing all the wonderful things you'll learn and bring back to our district throughout this program. And thank you for being here.
You are welcome to leave. Mr. Kenzies.
We have an exciting budget presentation up next.
It is mathematics, so...
Thank you for coming. So Mrs. Wazinski and Ms. Williams are going to present a revenue update for our, one of our budget presentations along the way with our development. And in addition to the revenue update, we're also going to provide you an update on investment planning. As you all know, we're in an interesting economy right now, where interest rates have become more and more important in our planning for our revenue, where over the last decade or so, they were pretty insignificant. So you've had some questions about how we're going about managing our cash flow and investing, and we wanted to provide you an update with that. In addition, we updated our revenue picture based on the governor's proposal that was released on February first.
Thank you.
So welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Williams and I are going to tag team tonight and share lots of new information with you. As we normally start, we will review our revenue assumptions and projections. And then Ms. Williams is going to join me and talk about cash flow factors, take a look at a snapshot of what our cash flow looks like at the end of January, review our investment plan, and our interest earnings to date. And then be able to answer any questions that you guys have. So on our, the information in blue is new from our January presentation, so we have updated it. Our property tax levy is slightly higher than what we had presented previously. At two-point-one-four percent is a tax cap compliant increase. And that increase was due to our state aid building aid number being a little higher than what we had in our projection. And it, I'm sorry, a little lower, actually. And it allowed our capital exclusion to increase a little bit, which is what raised that. It is a CPI of two percent, which is capped. And our tax-based growth factor is very minimal, which was actually the same number as last year. Our capital exclusion did increase to about nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. And those are expenses, the difference between voter-approved expenditures and the revenues that come in to offset those, that we're able to add on top of our tax levy, because they've already been voter authorized. Our tax cap calculation is due at the end of March, but that is a projection of what we anticipate adopting in April. So if there are no objections from the board, we will submit the tax cap with the information that we have. But if we need to adjust it later, we still have the ability to do that, all the way up through our adoption. The miscellaneous revenues, we do have a more significant increase of about twenty-one percent, or one-point-three million dollars. We took a look at the revenues for Erie County sales tax, and it's coming in higher than we had projected, so we increased those earnings. And we also increased our interest earnings. So in the previous presentation, we had put a number in of about fifty thousand, knowing that it was low and that we were going to look at it as we got a little bit further into the year. So Ms. Williams has some projections and some information on what we've earned so far. So we increased next year's budget to almost match it, slightly lower than what we think we're going to bring in this year. And that's simply because we don't know what the rates are going to be next year. We don't know what the rates will be in three months, much less eighteen months from now. But unfortunately, that's what our budget requires us to project. So it still may be conservative, but it's definitely much higher than we've seen in the last decade. So that is really exciting.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. You know, even when you look at the chart that Ms. Williams prepared in the presentation, the rates from July until now have changed significantly. And if you back up to this time a year ago, we couldn't have predicted that they were going to be what they are. So this is somewhat of a difficult revenue for us to plan for a year out. And when you listen to economists, you know, they'll say we're probably in for a rate hike one or two more times by June, and then we might be leveling off, I don't know. People seem to go crazy when the chairman of the Fed uses the term disinflation. Through the markets went into a tizzy today, so there's signs that inflation may be slowing down, and the rate hikes also might be slowing down by June, but, you know, it's hard to predict. So I think we took a conservative approach, which normally the board appreciates in that regard.
One other major change that we made in this category is how we're accounting for the rebates that we receive on our medical claims and our prescription claims. In the past, when we've received those rebates, we've netted them against our expenditures. And in the last two years or so, as they came in, we've started to record them on the revenue side, because they truly are revenues to the district. What we had, up to this point, we hadn't budgeted them there. So we were kind of rolling the dice a little bit, making sure that our expenditure line would be sufficient to cover our claims, and so far, they have been. But now we want to right-size that, so we're recording the revenues on the revenue side. But when we get to the expenditure picture at our next budget presentation, you'll see that that equal amount was added to our budget on the health insurance side and the expenditures. And then our transfers were made the same as our last presentation, keeping small amounts of our unemployment reserve and our tax reserve with equal expenditures, so that balances out. And using half of our debt service fund, which helps reduce our tax levy, but counts as a revenue for us. And then next year in our projection, you'll see that we're using the balance of that, and then in the third year, it's gone. So let's take a closer look at our state aid. So this was a huge piece of information for us mid-week last week. We wanted to show you what the budget looked like when we adopted it last April, so that's the first column. And then the column in blue matches our state aid runs for this year. So we can take a look and see that over a four-million-dollar increase on our foundation aid is finally fully funding our foundation aid, which I don't think I ever believed I would say. So that is very exciting. Our UPK grant stays expanded at seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. We did see an increase in BOSI's, and that's strictly based on our expenditures from the prior year. High cost and private access funds are reimbursements that we receive for educating some of our high-deep students. Hardware, software, textbook library, those are based on enrollment, and we get a specific per-pupil allocation. Transvocation is also expense-based, and that comes back to us based on what we spent the prior year. And then we have a slight decrease in our building aid, which is understandable, because this past year, we didn't do a capital outlay project. So when we do the hundred-thousand-dollar project in one year, we receive our building aid in the following year. So if we don't do a project one year, it makes sense that it already worked on a little bit. Down at the bottom, we take the UPK monies back out, because those are a grant. Even though they show on our state aid runs, they're not accounted for in general funds, so we want to make sure we're excluding those dollars, because the expenditures for the UPK grant are also housed in our special aid fund.
Hey, I would just like to take a horrible trip down memory lane. You know, three years ago, our foundation aid was fifty-eight percent of full funding. And we talked about it in this room, how some districts locally and across the state were at over a hundred percent of the funding. And then we made progress through a lot of advocacy efforts, through, you know, our legislators, and we got up to about sixty-eight percent. In the current year, we're at around eighty percent of our full funding. And next year, the governor has proposed that we're going to be a hundred percent funded, which I think has full support from the legislators as well. So I anticipate that this is a fairly good estimate for what we'll see in the adopted budget in April.
So when we take that five-million-dollar increase and add it in with all of the other revenues that we talked about, we have over a ten percent increase in our revenues, with a total budget of seventy-five-point-five million dollars. Now that we are getting state aid projections that are a little bit more consistent and a little bit more predictable, we've also incorporated some three percent increases to foundation aid in outgoing years, so that we can actually try to get a good look at what our long-range plans are going to look like, so that we can match that up with our expenditure budgets in the future, to make sure that any increases that we add to our budget are sustainable in the long term.
And that's a fair estimate, because that's what's happening for districts now that are fully funded. So if a district is at a hundred percent, which they call safe, harmless now, then their increase on their foundation aid for next year, as the governor proposed, is three percent. So there is some chatter that, moving forward, once the foundation aid is fully funded, that we might be looking at a percentage increase. But as you can imagine, there are some districts, especially districts with higher needs, that are suggesting that that may not be equitable. So, well, that's still yet to be determined, but I think three percent is a conservative estimate.
And the reason the numbers are less than three percent is because we only applied that increase to foundation aid, and we left all of the other aids flat, at zero percent, because they are expense-based. And then on the bottom, on the transfer line, you can see next year, it's slightly more than one-ninety-nine-five, because we have that refund plus any interest that it's earned over the last couple of years. And then in year three, you can see that drops right off, because we'll have expended all of those funds. One of the benefits of spreading it out over a couple of years is it helps us keep our tax cap steady. So up at the top, you can see our projections for our tax, for compliant tax cap, which stays in the low-twos each year. Again, one of our goals, so that our taxpayers have consistent and predictable budget, or, you know, tax increases that we're looking at. And then we have consistent and predictable increases as well, so that we can budget accordingly. So we have this large increase this year, but then in revenue, it goes back down to what we would consider more normal. But the benefit for our district is that now that we're fully funded with our foundation aid, that stays with us every year, and we don't have to worry about waiting for that to come in to help fill our gaps.
We might want to be conservative about this aid, because this aid is still made up of, I don't know, you know, the pandemic and the money that they threw at everything. This money runs out. So, you know, you talked about going backwards, right, and how things were. Well, number one went into COVID, New York State wasn't in that great of a shape. So just because we got this influx of money, doesn't all of a sudden mean that, once this money's done, that we're in this great shape. So I, you know, so one of the things you said was, "You're being conservative on the interest." To me, this isn't the environment to be that conservative. I would be more conservative on this. I would be more conservative on this one.
So I kind of share, and we're not going to really get into expenditures tonight because that's our next meeting where we're really going to dive into that and focus on that. But one of the things that we've been working on as a group is making sure that anything that we're going to recommend to the board for an increase is sustainable. So even though we have this large influx this year, we want to make sure that there are areas of our budget that if needed, can be pulled back in future years in case that revenue isn't there. So that is on our minds as well, so that we're not just adding all of this stuff and then trying to increase five or six percent on top of that every year. We want to make sure that we can control that in the subsequent years when we see that our revenue is no longer increasing 3%, 4%, 5%, it's increasing 1.5% or 1% so that we can project balanced budgets in the future.
Well, and then the other time I'll make though is, so when our foundation aid was 58%, it didn't mean that the district lost 42% of revenue that we should have had because it was made up by the property owners in the town or in the district. So the property owners are the ones that paid more than they should have paid. So we've got all this influx of money. We ought to think about not necessarily going to the cap then as we're making this budget, so.
And that's certainly something that we can discuss and that we can talk about. I will share though that the foundation aid is the state's formula for determining how much money a district needs to educate a child. So the foundation aid was equal, you know, it was the same formula for all districts across New York State. We were receiving 59%. There were other districts much wealthier than Amherst that were at 103%, 105%. All of that time, when we were only at 59% of what the state believed we needed to educate our kids, we were still tax-kept compliant with our increases to our property owners.
I'm sorry, that wasn't the case.
That it weren't compliant?
No, the presentations I went to, they separated districts into A, B, C, D, and E and came up with a common reform that Mr. Kenzie couldn't figure it out a year why he came up with these things. And so the E districts, which we were, okay, was, they couldn't figure out what else to do with us because we live in the same confines as Wooningsville and Sweetone, right? I mean, your letter was to, you know, not to read District S out because, you know, we're similar in needs and all that coming to the town, but so I would not say that that formula was based on what we needed.
Well, that was one year. There was one year when they allocated the foundation aid and they had the four categories of A, B, C, D, and E. And that was more in reference to, you know, if you were fully funded, then you were put in the same harmless. You know, if you were an average need district, then there was a bigger increase. If you were a low need district, then there was a smaller increase. And if you were a high need district, there was a larger increase because there was no commitment at that time to fully fund it. So if you think about it like having a pizza and you have eight pieces of pizza, but you have 12 guests to feed, that's sort of the analogy of what was going on with foundation aid. So what is happening now through settling the campaign fiscal equity, they're fully funding that formula that they put forward, albeit there's still some problems with the formula because it doesn't necessarily account for all of the demographic, you know, concerns that exist in some school districts like, you know, L population and what it takes to educate students that are in need of English language learner services. But there's a couple of things you said that I hear where you're coming from, but I don't know if it's a direct connection. For example, I don't know that I would say that our taxpayers funded the balance of the revenue when foundation aid wasn't where it was to be because the tax cap doesn't have foundation aid as one of the calculations in its formula. So it's not like we were able to raise our levy because we were getting less aid. The only way we could have done that is if we exceeded the cap. And we didn't, at least in the seven years that I've been in the chair. And I don't think there's ever been a time since you've been on the board, which is 15 years, where we exceeded the cap. So what the reason-
The cap wasn't here early, you know?
So what happened was is that we made cutbacks. We had higher class sizes, we had fewer programs for kids, we had, you know, less supplies, we had-
So how much money have we gotten in the last three years?
Our foundation aid was about 7 million when it was at 58% and now it's looking like it's going to 16 million?
We did have nine million cuts.
Oh, we had more than that?
Over one-year period?
Not over one-year period, since about 2010.
Yeah, but what we got in the increase over these three years is what we just said. So yeah, so if you add it all up, but I mean, we paid more than we should have been paying because we weren't in the foundation aid. I mean, you might say that the two might meet somewhere, but it's not-
I hear what you're saying, but it's not necessarily accurate to say the taxpayers paid more to offset the lower foundation aid. I think what you're saying is we have more aid so we can go lower in our levy now. We have that as an option to consider where in the past, we couldn't consider it. But we never said, I mean, we never said, "We're only getting 7 million in foundation aid, so we have to exceed the tax cap and go out with 6% to offset the revenue we need to run our programs." We made the adjustments for our programs.
When we weren't getting our fair foundation aid, then it was, it was being made up from property taxes. I mean, let's put it this way, if we had gotten foundation aid this whole time, right, since whenever that fiscal, it doesn't mean that our, I mean, our property taxes wouldn't have been insane necessarily. I mean, we've been paying more.
Well, the reality of it is Albany's been controlling all sources of our revenue since the tax cap was passed.
Well, it's fine. I'm not saying it's us.
So I mean, that's the challenge we face.
We gotta make up for it with the other side. If we weren't getting it from the state, it's gonna come from the local share. And that's, and that's what happened. And maybe it's not 100%, but some of that was.
Yeah, I would say it's probably a combination of taxpayers and very difficult decisions on the expenditure side of the equation.
But Tom, I don't think that, when you, when you look at the budget, even if the money was, let's just say the money, we were fully funded and we're moving along. Our expenses, whether it be contracts, pension costs, healthcare costs are still going up. Even if we had tax cap compliant 2%, some of these costs are going up more than that when we're going along. So we may have been increasing the, you know, our, putting in tax cap compliant budgets along the way, I think, no matter what. I mean, there were years in the past, you know, even prior to, when I got on the board in 2009, we started right after that, making really serious cuts. I mean, there was a year where, you know, we, I think we went out with a 7-plus percent increase in the budget. This is just before we had to do tax cap because, and we still made cuts because things were so bad. And but in prior boards, prior budgets, it was a 0%, you know, we're not raising, we're giving money back and things. And you look back and you're like, was that the smartest move in terms of, you know, building your budget along the way? Because your levy just doesn't go up, but your expenses are going up more, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think your suggestion is that this gives us options. The fact that the state is finally committed to fully funding the state aid piece of the equation. It's certainly a refreshing revenue picture for us than we had in the past. You know, and there's a lot of things that, having been in the district since 2012, I recall, like as Paul had said, a lot of difficult decisions. You know, changing bus times, you know, to save money. You know, proposing to remove nurses from private schools. You know, some of you lived through those packed board meetings with hard decisions, proposing to cut music teachers, you know, where you had to move meetings to the cafeteria. You know, those are all a reflection of us having to make hard decisions because our expenditures also had to adjust to the lack of revenue. And I think in this particular case, you know, we're pleased to see that the state has recognized that our district was underfunded.
Maybe we discuss it, you know, in terms of, you know, one of the discussion points could be in terms of, if you want to call it giving money back, is putting some more money aside for things that were, you know, our big capital project or things that, you know, we're talking about trying to save for, you know, to lessen the impact, you know, to improve our facilities, but.
So normally, what we would do in this particular presentation, and I think Dominic brings up a good point, which underscores why we're not doing it, is we would go into the expenditure side of the equation of our budget. But given the fact that this news is like a week old, we still have a lot more work to do with our administrative team and our department heads to plan for our expenditure side of the budget. But we did want to share with you that the revenue side of the budget looks good. And one of the things at the forefront of the conversation, as Paul had mentioned, is the fact that we had promised the taxpayers when they passed the capital budget, capital project, that we would allocate over $3 million of available funds towards that project by the time we go out to bond it in about four or five years. So this gives us an opportunity to accelerate that process, which we're definitely going to take advantage of. So at this point, we have the requirement that we have to submit that we're going to be tax cap compliant with our revenue. But we, as Mrs. Wazinski had said, we have the ability to amend it as we move forward. So if the board decides we don't necessarily want to go to 2.14 on the revenue side, we can make that decision later. We're not locked in right now.
So that is the end of the revenue side. And Ms. Williams is going to join us and she's going to talk through cash flow and our investments.
Good evening. So this is a tandem presentation, it's not the expenditures, but it is just a piece of the revenues. It's just the interest earnings that we're going to focus on and a little bit of how you get to that. Because the byproduct of your interest earnings is your cash flow, market rates, timing. Each month, I give you a full set of financial statements and one of those is a cash flow statement. So this is going to give you a picture of what all goes into getting that cash flow statement to you and everything that has to run through my mind and through my desk. So some of the cash flow factors-
Barb, before you go on, I just, I want to mention quickly to the board that I spent probably a couple of hours in your office one day and you had multiple spreadsheets on, I think, two or three monitors at your desk showing me how accurately and detailed you are in monitoring our cash flow and our debits and our credits and, you know, what's coming in when and when it's going out. And we had a lengthy conversation about how we would put all of that voluminous information into a presentation for the board. So I can tell you that Barb did a nice job working with Laura to put together this presentation. But this is a summary of what she's looking at on a daily basis and tracking on a daily basis. But we asked her to put it into summary form, which is appreciated for these purposes, but not necessarily her style because she's very detail-oriented.
Yes, this is more the challenge than the actual work. So just running down through the laundry list, it can be simpler or as complex as the models that you build. So what you're attempting to do is just predict the cash flow ins and outs. There's, and it is different than measuring revenue and expenditures for your budget piece because this is just the gross, all the revenues, all the cash that comes into the accounts and everything going out. It has to be fluid, it has to be adaptable. It is dependent on the timing and there are some known issues that you can predict. And that's what finally dovetails into how you invest the cash to maximize the interest earning. So as, as was just mentioned, I do have a master annual document that I keep. I lock it down after every month finishes and I've delivered your board reports. And then the rest of the year is just estimates for me. But after a while, it becomes very predictable. I also have to take into account accruals at the end of the year and at the beginning of the year. And except for August and September, when I have to go to almost a daily picture because we're in a very low cash flow area, most of the year, I can just work with the master schedule. So what are those cash flow things that impact me? Payrolls, they're fairly predictable. They're bi-weekly. I know they're about a million and a half each time. And then we have a very significant payroll at the end of the year. In June, it increases to about 6.5 million. So I have to have about that much money ready at the end of June as we're coming to the end of the year. The reason for that is our teachers, you like to either, they're paid over 21 or 26 payrolls. So it's kind of like a balloon payment at the end. Instead of getting it in the summer, they get it all right in that last June paycheck and then they make it work the rest of the summer. Check runs, they will fluctuate. I can work with averages with the check runs. They run about 1.6 million. Our self-insured is our wildcard out there. That fluctuates all the time too. I can work with averages on that and that's running about 650,000 a month. And then the debt payments, they're very nice. They're set in stone. They're on very specific dates. So that is outgoing. Incoming, property taxes, they just start in late September. Most of it is concentrated in October. So this year, we have about 12% of our tax money in September and 83% in October. Sales tax comes in first of the month quarterly, July 1st, September 1st, January 1st, April 1st. And that is, you'll see that again in a few minutes because those dates are very key to me. Sometimes they come early, which saves us. If I have to wait one day, it could be the difference during the July, September, October timeframe of making payroll or not making payroll and paying our bills until all of the tax money gets here. And then state aid, the heat aids are September, January, March, and June. State aid from that standpoint, lottery aid is about 4 million, that comes in September. Then in January, we get our STAR aid, about 3 million. March is our big one. That's about 6, 7 million of the state aid. It comes during that time, all the categorical aids come. And that is key for me in March because that almost feeds the June payroll that I need. And I can invest that and just hang onto that. Okay, a couple of other factors that affected us this year. Capital reserve funds, about 2.5 million was what was saved in the reserve and that's what was voter-approved to go into the next project. During January, I did move that from the general fund to our capital projects fund. So that cash flow of 2.5 million is no longer available to me to keep liquid and fluid within the general fund. Couple of other things, the CARES Act, the COVID dollars as we call it. That has been a little bit trickier. Some of those things are held in our grant fund and they are expenditure-driven, which means the expenditures have to have been made and paid before I can claim the money from the state. So that draws the general fund for cash flow for a little bit anyway. And to overcome that, I have a monthly routine in place where all grants, I look at those and as soon as I know everything's been paid, I get requests out to the state to keep that cash flow going. Okay, so now, this will be a little snapshot. And this is right up to date through January 31st. I know you only have your December financials now. It usually takes me till about the middle of the month to get the full set together. Again, cash receipts and cash disbursements is different than revenue and expenditures in this case. And if you see, if you look at the August time, there's a, the third column from the right is ending cash and then you see reserves cash and then total cash. The ending cash in August was minus 1.4 million. But I have reserve money of 6 million set aside. So the total cash in the district at that point in time is 4.7 million.
Ms. Williams, is this where, you know, we've heard where we, instead of doing, was it a tan or something? We're essentially using our own money to fund, you know, our savings account to fund while we wait for the money to come in from-
Yeah, you're using the reserves, right. If I had to keep the reserves intact and couldn't use that, then I'd definitely have to be borrowing. The way we do it though is, and I'm going to compare September and October in a minute, but you can see that the reserves haven't changed. You'll see one change from December to January, that's where the 2.5 million has now gone out. But back in that August, September timeframe, there were three payrolls in September, the 2nd, the 16th, and the 30th. To make it all work, on September 27th, there was, I was planning for a 1.5 million payroll and we had 1.9 million of unpaid bills. I pulled back on the vendor invoices to make sure I can cover the pay- I pulled back on the vendor invoices to make sure I can cover the payroll until I have money coming in. So luckily, September 27th was our first wire transfer for our taxes, and it came in at 2.7 million. And the Erie County sales tax, which would have come on October 1st, came on the 29th. So for a payroll on the 30th, that's how I was able to cover it. And then by the time we get into October, when the taxes really start flowing, I'm able to pay off all the bills, and then October is when we kind of get back on an even keel. In the meantime, we've had audit. We're sitting in two fiscal years. We've got a lot of other things going on at that time. But my focus is always on the cash until we get over that little hump, and then we're good. So it's like mid-October is when we can start really looking, okay, now what can I do if the cash is there? How can I invest it? One last thing I missed, you will see the total cash at the end of January was 25 million. And a little concentration of the cash at that point in time, very little in checking, about half of it in savings, and about another 45% in the treasury bills. So 25 million looks like a lot. Focus on the savings of the 13 million. I have to make the decision, do I take that to a T-bill, which I, the minimum time I can do it is 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? What do I do with that? If you flip the page, I did that 13 million. I lost 6.6 million and I lost it. But this got paid out on February 3rd. So January 31st snapshot to February 3rd, and where did it go? It was the transfer of the capital reserve. We had the debt service payment on the 1st. We had payroll on the 3rd and a check run on the 3rd. So that's how fast it goes. So the rest is invested, and it's just timed out to mature, to best in my ability with some of these things that I know. When's the next payroll? And where does that lay? And when can I have a T-bill come due to meet that cash? At the same time, you've got cash going out and cash coming in. So that's the trick of it. So in that, that kind of dictates an investment plan. Okay, checking accounts, I always keep it a very bare minimum. It's kind of like the just-in-time thinking. If I know I have enough in savings, I draw that over, and the T-bills are timed to come into there when I need it. Savings accounts, all incoming receipts that come into our district automatically go to a savings account. So there's interest being earned there until I can settle it back out, either investing or need it. And then certificates of deposit, treasury bills, the cash flow again is going to dictate how we invest. And it's the timing, how to mature, I mean, they're reinvesting or moving it into the savings. And then again, the shortest increment that I can do is 30 days for T-bills. So the next slide, this was interesting because when I don't have cash flow, you can see where the rates were in July. And then I have an extra little column in my notes here. But on October 14th, the taxes are coming in. That's about the earliest I can start. Okay, how am I going to start investing this? Actually, early in October, when I'm thinking ahead and planning, I called our advisor. And 2 points, 2 months was at 1.98. He said, I think we have word that it's going up. Sure enough, within a week or two, it went from 1.98 up into that 3 range. So if I had invested at the 1.98, I would have lost the opportunity on this, which, those are the things you don't know. I don't have that crystal ball to know what's going to happen here. But in that instance, it worked out well for us because I kind of got to wait for the cash to settle in.
Well, this is the chart I referenced prior to the discussion about the revenue predictions for interest earnings, you know, as we're looking from now until, you know, this time next year. I mean, that's a significant increase from July up until the current day. And we're hoping it stays that way until June, you know, come October, November, December of next year. So which advisor?
We work through MNT investment advisors to secure them. They've been really, we've worked really well with them. And it's a lot easier than, I put the CD rates up there. We haven't tapped into CDs. The T-bills are a little bit easier. You call up. I tell them about how much cash I have. They calculate it up. And like, within 10 minutes, they're back to me with the rates. The CDs, we take a little bit more paperwork and signatures and things.
So is there no money market that we can use?
The money market rates are below, some of the savings are in money markets. But it's like 1.5, which is the newest-
For whose money markets?
Just the banks, the banks that we have.
Just for reference, what's the difference between, say, what you would get on your savings account versus what the school could possibly get on the schools, is it significantly different?
It's not too much different, but if the savings accounts were running like 0.65, one of the banks, even on January 31st, was 0.04. So the highest one was 1.5, and that just increased mid-January from 0.65. So that's why we migrated to T-bills.
Could you just, could I ask, could you ask them about government money markets? And MNT probably doesn't have one, but there's plenty of them out there that are paying 4 or above. I, you know, I stopped at the office before I came here, and that'll be institutional money markets, 459.
Is that the savings account?
It's a money market. It's next-day liquidity. Now, I know that we're restricted in what we do, so that's why I'm suggesting that the question might be, do you have a government money market? Now, MNT might not want to tell you that because they keep, you know, if you're in theirs, then that's their capital that they're using, okay? If you ask them, you know, I'm a board member, you know, can we not use federated government, you know, money fund? Or, you know, that's all treasuries or agency notes. Because I know that, I know it's higher than that.
So those are institutional things. So in order to do that-
No, it's just the name. I didn't, I could put $500 in there for-
Right, but I think, yeah, I need to be authorized to work with those. Right now, I'm just limited to the banks. You've authorized in a organizational meeting. So I would need a resolution to be able to invest in those.
If there's another bank that we want to use?
Yeah, I think the question is to ask our current banks, do you offer a government money market?
Yeah, not, yeah, no, no.
Yeah.
Well, there's other entities that would probably have savings things, too. I know a couple.
No, no, you could keep it at MNT and just have them-
If it's a product that they offer.
Yeah.
They should.
And I think we also have JP Morgan, right?
JP Morgan.
Yeah.
Because I know that they offer it.
So as Dominic suggested, it may not be something that we're willingly saying, hey, give me a 4.9% or 4.5% in this money market instead of 0.65% in the savings account. We may want to ask if it'd be a little bit more forceful.
They work at Net Interest Margin, so that's, you know, so who's them?
It's worth the net.
We can have both of them.
Yeah.
And again, it's something that we can do, but, you know, it's potentially significant. And, you know, there's a, there's a point now where, well, I don't know if we're there yet, but where the short-term rates may be even higher. Short-term rates are now higher than 2-year rates. They're almost higher, I'm talking about the overnight, and this is overnight money that is next-day liquidity. So it wouldn't be like you're checking or you're just writing. It's one day.
Right, right.
So I just-
But it gives a lot more flexibility with the cash flow issues that we're talking about. If it's only one night, one day liquidity.
Yeah, well, and it's, you know, I mean, you know what happens. So, you know, it's like, all right, what do you need to have it? But it's, you know, I'm just thinking, how do we maximize every, you know, every dollar?
So the last slide then is where we are today with interest earnings. So the actual is the first column, 110, and then knowing T-bill maturities is going to add another 150. And then we've estimated through the end of June, not knowing, you know, where the rates are going to go and what's going to happen.
So, I had one of those. Back in the, with the cash flow snapshot, we're showing that here. So I'll just, I'll just go on that reserves cash column?
Yes.
So if there's interest in there, does it go back in there or is it just in the general fund?
No, the interest stays with the reserve, and I always keep the reserves whole. So even though I've used the cash, I, whatever interest is earned in the accounts, I make sure that the reserve doesn't lose anything, that it gets the interest for them on.
Because I'm just looking at, there's not, you know, there's not much of a, you know, earnings on that. And I know, you know, rates have just started to go up, but that's, that's all those. And you can't tell if January is making, but that's from the November to December.
Well, the interesting thing is, if you think about, I asked Laura the other day, like, what if you budget for interest earnings as a revenue for the current year? And I think you said $16,000. So I'm glad the conversation is being had and the opportunity is being capitalized on because, you know, the picture that we have now is that we could be near $400,000 of revenue from interest earnings when we predicted 16,000. I guess that's the good news for the current year, but I think it also underscores the difficulty in using that as a planning tool. So I like the opportunity for that to maybe be an unplanned revenue, or that's why I mentioned we took a conservative approach for next year, put it at 250 instead of maybe 4 or 5, where we think we could be or will be, just because of, you know, what the rates may do and the unpredictability of that.
Yeah, well, but I think, though, so we had like 10 or 15 years of almost nothing, right? And prior to that, we had, I don't know, 20 years, going back then, money market rates, or whatever you want to call it, were 4 to 6, or maybe, you know, 3 to 5. And so there was, you know, there was some predictability in that. If, now, you know, I don't have the dates. I know the next day of the Fed meeting is March 22nd. I actually just emailed someone today. I know there's seven left for this year. And so chances of them cutting these rates at any of those, I think are slim to none. So if you're looking at that stuff, you might want to maybe use those dates. And I think it's like every six weeks, so, but if you just put Google up and see, you know, meetings, you can see the dates. So those, potentially, given the environment that we're in, you know, might be dates that you want to know as it relates to this stuff. Normally, they, you know, you wouldn't really matter, but for the environment that we're in, I think that that makes, you probably would want to know to give them your first example, so.
Although, sensitivity is actually kind of comical. You know, when you have the chairman of the Fed at the, what was it, the Economy Club today in DC? And anytime he hinted at inflation being tame or calming down, you could see the market go through the roof today. So if you look at today's graph, it's like this, and then it's this, and then it's this, all in one day, just because the investors were reacting to his commentary.
Now, if you really want to break this down, if you're, like, you know, when they talk about CPI numbers, BLS, Bureau of Statistics, is the one that reports it. And they've got their spreadsheet, and it tells you what, you know, what it was versus, you know, what we're going into. So last year, this time, we actually had fairly high inflation. So I'd be shocked if these numbers don't continue coming lower. The others were up, and less than 1 CPI has been 0.9. So if you analyze it, 1.8, and what he was talking about was, you know, trying to get things down to 2. All right, that's, but anyways, so if you want more information, you can, you can go there.
But I think the best thing that I jotted down is, and I just want to make sure we all have the same takeaway, is to ask our current banks if we can get a government money market. And then if not, we can shop around for institutions that we might be able to add to the reorg meeting as authorized institutions.
Well, exactly, yeah.
Really good idea.
Are there any other questions? Well, I would like to thank Ms. Williams for the work that not only she's done in this presentation, but that she does all throughout the year. Because as you can see, this is, you think, you've seen my spreadsheets. They're not, not being compared to hers. But it is a daily task, and there are a thousand other things happening, and she stays on top of all of it, which is why whenever we've talked about this in the past, I very confidently shared with you, Barb's on it, like, she is on it. So I'm happy that she was able to showcase that for you tonight, and I'm looking forward to the next steps that we have to take. It's definitely an exciting time, and it's certainly not anything I've experienced in my tenure in this role.
And is Ms. Williams always this calm because that daily stress of, well, now I have no money, and tomorrow I'm going to have a ton of money, and the next day I'm going to have none again?
Yeah, that's just the summertime when everything's-
Yeah, I was going to say, it's really killer off the ceiling warmth. Pretty calm, though.
So when is it really, like, is it June or May?
No, no, it's that August, September time when I, I had to pay payrolls during the summertime based on the June one. And a lot of times when you're doing your fund balance, you're in calculation. That's accrued at June. It doesn't even come in until August or September.
So what is that big payroll that we have in June, right?
Teachers, yeah, teachers have the ability-
She said about 6 million.
Oh, the numbers, yeah.
Each payroll goes about 1.5 million, so about 3 million a month. But then that very last one is almost one and a half times that or-
And that last one is normally the third of that month because it doesn't always, the end of the school year doesn't always fall on the two payroll schedules. So it could be the second or third of that month. And then you add on to it, it's about the equivalent of what, five and a half pays for the people who elect that option?
So it's just a good timing thing, you know? If the pays were earlier in the year, the cash would be going that much faster, so.
All right, March 21st, expenditures.
Yeah, I think I would add just one more thing to the conversation, and you and I have talked about it, but just for the board's sake, the, you know, when we have that difficult time in August, September, July, August, September, October, most school districts will take out a RAN or a TAN, as Paul had alluded to, a revenue anticipation note or a tax anticipation note. And it's just a short-term borrowing that, you know, we pay back to, you know, so our cash flow is not negatively affected. And we haven't done it because we've used our own reserves in order to save on the closing costs and the interest on the short-term borrowing. However, in this day and age, if the interest earnings we could get on investing our money is higher than the interest we may pay on a borrowing, we may want to look to take out a TAN or a RAN if that means we could earn more investing than we're going to pay in interest on the borrowing.
If we can, if we can use the government fund, but I think they should be paying, we might be able to do it. The yield curve is different in the market. It's kind of, it's, it's a strange. The shorter it is, the higher, you know, the quality. So potentially, if we do it short-term, there might, I don't know how long that lasts. I'm just, I'm not sure. That one, I don't understand.
And the RAN and the TAN resolution are included on the reorg agenda annually, even though we haven't been using them, just so that if we need it, it's there and we can take action without having to come back to the board or have another meeting. So that is a practice that we've had in place.
It'd be interesting to see the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I haven't looked at the bond rates because they're just not a lucrative investment at this time. Seems like they're going down while the equity markets go up, so I don't know. Like you, I don't understand why that's happening.
And previously, it wouldn't have worked out. Interest rates were nonexistent, and we would have had to pay legal fees, closing, you know, the closing costs and the interest. So it's not just interest to interest, it's the legal fees and the closing costs that go along with it.
That's a good point.
But now-
So we've tried to avoid it.
Right. But if the interest earnings on, like, the reserves being fully invested for that whole time are going to outweigh not only the interest costs, but the closing costs embedded into that, it might be something that we look at.
We're talking about that balloon payment at the end of June for those summer pays. Is there any reason that we wouldn't ever just keep paying each payroll through the summer rather than a balloon payment?
I have the same question.
So those monies are earned by the teachers through the fiscal year. So our fiscal year ends June 30th. So we would want all of that money to be expended prior to the close of our fiscal year. And then July 1 is our new fiscal year.
Well, and some school districts do that.
Yeah.
Like, my sister-in-law works in a neighboring school district, and she continues to get her paycheck over the summer. And I think I asked Mike one time, you know, why don't we do that? And you had a really good answer, but I can't recall. I know I'm putting you on the spot. Thank you for doing it. I think some of it has to do with, you know, people leaving and then-
Generally speaking, that fiscal year, as Laura's pointing out, starts in July. So you're essentially paying people before they even start working. So if they leave, similar to healthcare, actually, we ran into that once in a while with doctor bills- bill someone when we've already started that fiscal year, that it's, it's, that would be a nightmare.
Yeah.
January is a really big deal for us.
But then subsequently, after I started having the conversation, I learned that some of the school districts that are doing it are looking to change it to what we have because of the reason Mike mentioned, because it can become a human resources nightmare. But I had the same with that question.
But it is money that they've earned through the year, and instead of taking a fifteen hundred dollar paycheck, they take about, you know, whatever. It's just less than a little bit.
We have one more presentation in the superintendent's report that's not related to budget. So I will ask if we could shift our focus a little bit to long-term, long-range planning. Dr. Shanahan is going to present our updated strategic plan, which we have been working on over the last few months to reset. And we're pleased to have a draft to present to you tonight. Following feedback from tonight, we will also look to adopt it formally at the March board meeting. I also wanted to thank, unless Deb and Dr. Shanahan are done, I also wanted to thank.
This might be really short and just sound out. That's okay. We can flexible. Sorry, we love budget conversation. We're going with it.
Well, I also wanted to thank our board members who served on the strategic planning committee, Mrs. McLaughlin, Mrs. Urth, and Mr. Steinle. So thank you for your work on the committee.
So, thank you. And I just have one thing. Barb, we pepper her from my office too, and she is always that calm. So I was with you on November eleventh, and we talked about the strategic plan, and I shared with you our timeline and what we were going to do. We were going to revise our two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty-two written plan because of our twenty twenty interruption with instruction due to the pandemic, and, which caused us to change our initiatives, and we had to change how we were teaching our students, and also how we were just able to interact with our students. With that said, at that time, I reminded you that we reconnected with the Warner School of Education, who has been a good external source to provide us with information as we move through this process, and we partnered with them again as we reset the initiatives of our strategic plan. When I was with you last time, I told you we were leaving our priority areas the same, which we have the three that we base multiple presentations and conversations on the district, and we were going to specifically look at initiatives. This was the timeline I shared with you. I'm happy to say we finished all of our analysis. We had a draft of a plan that was marked up and given to the Strategic Planning Council so they could see where the planning started and what recommendations we made based on the analysis. So we had initiatives for five years. We went over those initiatives, looked at them and continuing to see, are they necessary anymore given the changes? Are they not necessary? Or is there something in the middle? Do we need to keep it as is, keep it, but revise how the initiative is written because it just doesn't make sense anymore? And I'll share some of that with you as we move along. So we reconvened on the Strategic Planning Council on January twenty-sixth in the library, and here we are today. I, you should have received a draft, or not a draft, the final recommendation that the Strategic Planning Committee made, Council made, to approve in the next board meeting, which we need to take a look at with the changes in it. I've just heard that Deb does not have access to my presentation. I'm not sure why, but okay. So we won't play the beautiful video of the process that evening and see the images of many of your colleagues sitting here today, and we'll roll with it, because that's what we do.
There's probably me, Yammer, and on anyway. They've got enough of that.
I think Donna went in and clicked the permission off or something for me. So anyways, this will capture the majority of, you know, what I was going to share. So we have, these are the three priority areas. There was a slight name change. We used to call it learning and achievement was priority number one. And there was a long discussion about the fact that the actual focus areas and initiative in that priority area were focused on both teaching and learning, and they wanted to represent it as such. So that was done. If you look in the bulleted areas here, these are actually the focus areas. In the full plan that you have, you'll have the priority, the focus area, and a longer initiative describing that focus area. And what happens with that? That is a more global plan, higher level, thirty thousand foot, and that gets taken to the building strategic planning committees, and they make actionable steps that are appropriate for their grade levels, their students, et cetera. So that's to come this summer. But I wanted to just highlight a couple changes because you have the copy that you need to look at. So if I look at teaching and learning, learning some of the specifics, some of the more sizable changes were, one was in student growth. The committee and we have, you know, Paul was on that one, so you can jump in if you want to add anything. But that group talked about the fact that our previous initiative and focus area was very narrow and focused on a small subset of students, and they felt that it didn't represent all of our students in person. They wanted to broaden that. That can also be seen as coming at an approaching education from a deficit model versus an opportunity to learn model. So they recommended that we make a shift there to look at all student growth and not just pinpoint directly in the plan just some sub-populations. So we did, you'll see in the revisions that that was changed. Additionally, we have some language from the Common Core State Standards that is very dated from when we started this planning years ago. And so we did take, for example, like Pathways to Graduation, and we aligned that more with the language of the Next Generation Standards. So there are standards that were responsible for teaching the standards to our students in, as well as we now have, and you've heard we speak of, Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. And so our integration of technology and application of technology was a major shift. Plus, some of the stuff we had in there, we blew by that during the pandemic in ways that we never thought we would use technology when we wrote it before we had to teach digitally, right? And so between the standards changes and our practices changing, given the pandemic, there was, there were language changes there. So those are some of the bigger changes. There was wordsmithing along the way as well. And the Student Life Group, there, I would say some of their major, we had major changes where we had student and teacher relationships before, but I, the way the initiative was written focuses even more on those relationships and the importance of them, given the pandemic and the social, emotional impact that it had on our students. It's very important that we continue to strive to find ways to connect with our students so that they do achieve what they, what they can, and, and their, their highest levels, whatever that might be. The other major change, I think, is right here, character of education, diversity, equity, and inclusion for combined area of focus. We felt that that needed to be separated. There was very different work to be done, done in those. Although they talked to each other, they needed to be separated out. So you'll notice, like, in the diversity, equity, and inclusion, one of the initiative in that is to, is to form a DEI committee and to start doing some district work in that area beyond what we're currently doing in our own practices. So if you want to, as you're looking through the different initiatives, you'll notice a major change there. The other two were just slight wordsmithing changes. Yammer's pride, I think after what we all just went through, the social, emotional feeling connected, feeling like you belong is really important. And there were language changes around this one as well, focusing on staff wellness, community wellness, the families that are connected to our school, and trying to bring them together. So there were small changes there, wordsmithing. And I know Jeannie was on that. She can bring up anything on that as well. So those were, when you look through, you'll see the similar priority areas, one name switch, focus areas changing to make them more relevant to where we are and to focus on where we are in time. And then the initiatives will describe the work to be done on a global level, which will then be, once approved, will go back to the building-based strategic planning teams, and they will then make the actionable steps to meet the initiatives, and will be back on cycle again. Mr. Pennella already did this, but we had a robust committee show up for three hours after work. So that was a big commitment for them. And we thanked our parents and our, and our, we had a student there that, it was very difficult to get students. They were very busy. And so timing was difficult, and we had some parents.
How many languages did that student speak?
Six.
Six languages.
We had a young lady that spoke six languages. She was amazing.
And she was super helpful, too. Like, she had, you know, a little, you know.
She was, she was not afraid to participate and give a really good picture of how she saw her experience.
And that kind of thing, like, yeah.
Did she answer the question?
Oh, she's running the high school.
She's just.
She just texted.
Did she just text? She just told me what to say right now. She was, she was a phenomenal representative, phenomenal, as well as we have, you know, our, some of our parents as well. So.
Well, I think, you know, one thing that you didn't include, and I, and it's not because you didn't include it, it's because we talked about it, and I asked you not to include it, but I think I'm.
Oh, you're rolling it now.
So now I'm including it. No, I think one of the things that I would mention is, while we had a really comprehensive process that created the original plan, this was looked at as a reset, you know, because we were midway through. But the Warner Center did still use some data to help drive the process. And one of the things they asked us to do was a survey of all staff, which Lynn administered on Superintendent's Conference Day in October. And the, I just want to mention, because I think it's a testament to the school district and the leadership team, you know, the responses were overwhelmingly positive, although there was, there's still work that needs to be done. I think Lynn Erdel from the Warner Center had said she's never seen results like this from a survey that she's administered. So we can, you know, certainly be proud of the fact that things are going well, but we also need, know we need to have a commitment to continuous improvement. And I think we found that balance throughout this process.
Since you brought that, opened that door, she also talked about the growth because they did the initial survey, and then this one, and the growth over time was just the, just the feeling of community and culture being heard, being listened to, you know, that type of stuff was very clear to her. And it, I did go back and look at the old surveys, which I had not seen before because I wasn't here. She was, they were very impressed with the growth over time, so.
Couldn't you get that?
I can, I can, yeah, I can have it before. We got it the last time, but we have, oh, you mean the new one?
Yeah.
I can, yeah, I can link anyone important for it.
Well, I almost liked, like, what you got, so.
Harrison.
There's two of them. If you, if you want to read them, it makes for nice reading.
Yeah, I would, I would put them in the board report.
You probably have the old one, but it might be easier for you to just have them handy in one spot instead of having to go dig for the old one.
And there are areas of growth, but there was, they just said widespread. It was different than what they should see.
I think the other interesting thing, and I forget who said it, but was that we actually use ours, you know? And a lot of districts go through this, you know, whole thing at the beginning, and then it goes in a drawer somewhere. And, you know, we actually do, like, the, you know, the people who run the schools and the people who, you know, when people are thinking through what they're going to do, they actually refer to our strategic plan as a sense of direction, and that we do, and it was all because of what the people in our community told us.
Yes.
You know, from the beginning. And that's kind of, you know, that was your platform when we hired you, was that you were going to do this thing, and you did it.
Well, that, yeah, I try to do what I say I'm going to do. But the, the interesting thing is, we have an infrastructure, though, that, you know, each building has a strategic planning committee, and every year they look at the initiatives and they customize them for their building, the grade levels, their needs, which I think is what has contributed to the success. You know, it's funded, there's an infrastructure, people are willing to participate. So that's a big part of it.
It is rare when you see it actually executed. Just because I, before taking this position, I've got multiple district side with them, the mission statements from a drawer, strategic plans weren't used. Like, we, we use them in budget conversations, like, I'm going to have this thing, committees, like, we, we just put in there a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. That needs to be funded. So if we really mean it, we have to align all of our resources, whether they be human, you know, or financial. So it's, it's, I came in the middle of the party, but it's a really good infrastructure of teacher leadership as well as administrative leadership and multiple layers, so.
Thank you. Came in the middle of the party with a quality of charcuterie. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're the one we have tonight for the superintendent's board.
All right, well, we need to move into new business because I think somebody's got a nice new orange tie on that wants to know if he's got a job.
Why did I just walk in?
Shut the rife.
I'd like to make a motion for new business items E one, A through X, two, A through E, three, B through H.
Wait a second. Hold on. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of new business items E one, A seven zero? Congratulations, Mr. Rogers. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Welcome to the neighborhood.
We look forward to it.
I knew that. I was.
We look forward to working with you.
And I allow to wear a B. next sweater to work.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to joining your team. And from the conversations I had, I wasn't ready for a speech. From the conversations I had, the interviews, the meeting with Dr. Shanahan, Mr. Valyle, and your superintendent, it seems like you guys have a great thing going here. So I'm honored. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Ms. Cossody, do we have any follow-up actions?
We do. We have three, and they set up what I have. Ask MNT and JP Morgan if they offer government money markets. Look into other banks that might offer government money markets. And the board is requesting the original and new surveys for, for the strategic plan.
And we got to look at the practice as it relates to policy eighty-three twenty, calculator practice.
Oh, yes. Great. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make the motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding employment of what particular person and litigation.
Wait a second.
Second.
Mr. Smith, all in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.